So, Mr. Blair, do you want to begin?
Sure.
Good late afternoon or early evening, Mayor Walker and councilors. Going to be passing down the row copies of the Planning Commission bylaws, which I think might help inform the discussion about the ordinance bylaws and administrative procedure distinction. One thing that I would note, first of all, is sometimes the terms are, they're legalese, so it's probably best to just give an overview of what the terms really are. An ordinance is the city council's equivalent to a law. At the state level, they're tended called statutes, as well as at the federal level. Ordinances do have the force of law, so that, once you codify it in the city code, that is sort of, it's a stricture. It's not, it's not debatable, so to speak. A resolution certainly expresses your intent and your will, but that's for more temporary matters. Or, and a resolution doesn't have to be temporary, but it does not have the force of law, so to speak. Bylaws are typically rules of procedure. And then administrative procedures are the things that are customarily handled by staff in a governmental organization. An ordinance, to discuss the CRB specifically, typically ordinances, you can look at the Human Rights Commission, or you can look at the Planning Commission in Chapter 2 of the city code. They both have ordinances. Those ordinances spell out their duties, their composition, as well as how they're appointed. The Planning Commission ordinance, if I recall correctly, spells out the stipend that each commissioner receives from the city. And it handles those foundational matters that, if we were looking at corporate law, you might see in a corporate charter, so to speak. Bylaws, and I provided you the Planning Commission's bylaws, are sort of, once those duties are established and you set up a CRB, the bylaws sort of guide how the CRB conducts its business. Looking at the Planning Commission bylaws, for instance, it talks about the officers and their duties. So, CRB had a similar proposal in their draft bylaws. So, if there's a chair of your board or commission, this spells out the chair, spells out the vice chair and their duties. Typically also, it would spell out the terms for those members. The chair serves a year. It's elected every January or every July. Then you get down to, in these bylaws for the Planning Commission, their meeting schedule. It talks about, we will hold an annual meeting that will elect the chair and approve our bylaws, and then we will have regular meetings on certain times and times of day and days of the week. Then you would look through here, and it talks about the conduct of meetings. And it talks about a quorum, for instance. How many members of the Planning Commission make up a quorum? And the procedure, as well as how planning commissioners would vote on matters before the commission. And so, then we get to, once you have the ordinance and once you have the bylaws, there are other things the CRB has in their proposed bylaws that might, they might not be found in either document, so to speak. A lot of budgetary matters, for instance, typically, if a, if a public board or commission, they may have, such as the Planning Commission, a budget that is submitted as part of the NDS budget. Or the Human Rights Commission has the Office of Human Rights, which does submit a budget as well for their expenses and budget and appropriations for the year. And the council ultimately approves that budget and the appropriation for each commission, as well as each department. What else am I talking about with administrative matters? I know there was a case about reimbursement, for instance, and the CR, and bylaw about reimbursement. And the CRB had in there a reimbursement procedure. Again, typically, that may not even be in a bylaw or an ordinance. That may just be something that, if there's staff that helps the CRB, the staff would take care of reimbursements as an administrative procedure. I would say this, and I did meet with a couple of CRB members a few weeks ago, and the initial resolution, which established the initial CRB, it did talk about draft bylaws. And sort of, just the December 2017 resolution provided this one vehicle and said, "Present draft bylaws." And the CRB, I think, following the intent of that resolution, has included all of these matters in a document labeled "Draft bylaws." But the reason I wanted to go over this is that probably some of that needs to be in an ordinance. Some of it is definitely bylaw material. And then some of it, again, may be handled administratively by the staff from the city that helps the CRB. But I think, again, the CRB has done what it's been charged with in producing a document that has been labeled "Draft bylaws." I think at this point, though, it probably, to the council, once it's presented, that some of it will have to go into an ordinance that codifies, and by the force of law, the CRB.
So, did you leave it with, when you met with them, that, I'm sorry, just, they would take a pass at kind of dissecting that? Or that we would have all of this together, and then we would work through the city attorney's office to kind of proportion these in the right place?
Well, I think that's more organic at this point. I don't know that I've, that we talked specifically of how that would go, but, but our office is happy to either work with the CRB, the council, or both in crafting an ordinance, a draft ordinance. Obviously, you still would have to approve that as the council.
I just think it is helpful, like, to see those deliverables separated out.
Sure.
Exactly.
Okay.
I guess that covers the first piece. Given Dr. Bellamy isn't here yet, is there other items that we feel might be better covered now versus when he does arrive? So, we've got the scope, which is a pretty big, heavy, heavy lift of the relative arms that have been proposed, the composition of the CRB in that selection process, and then the consideration of staff. And then, obviously, they're looking at also a timeline for their work. Sir?
Well, if I may, my only comment is that it, I think, would help this body to really have a good, clear understanding of the distinction between the ordinance, the bylaws, and the procedures. So, the composition, as I understand what you're talking about, would be something in an ordinance.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, it would just help me to frame our conversation today in terms of whether it's an ordinance, a bylaw, or a procedure. Because then, if, if at the end of this meeting, we give direction to the CRB to, to work with the attorney's office, then we've kind of already begun the process of distilling them in a more clear way. That's just a thought. But I think it might help prevent confusion moving forward, since there is a clear distinction between ordinance, bylaws, and administrative procedures. So, I, so if we, it would help me if we're, when we talk about things like composition, flag it, oh, that's ordinance material. Does that make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
I can take those one by one right now. Sort of the, in terms of discussing the scope of the permanent CRB relative to the arms proposed, those would, again, that's sort of a substantive nature that would go in an ordinance. That would need to, again, be discussed today. I know the CRB has proposed three separate arms. Council needs to make a decision, I think, on that point, in terms of an ordinance, as to, do you favor one, two, or all three arms? Or any additional arms that may not have been proposed? In terms of discussing the composition of the permanent CRB and the selection process, I think that should definitely be in an ordinance. Consideration of paid staff to support the CRB and corresponding funding. As far as paid staff to support the CRB, if you look at the Human Rights Commission ordinance, it does talk about the executive director in there. The Planning Commission ordinance does talk about the director of planning will serve as the secretary of the Planning Commission. That's in the Planning Commission ordinance. So, that's probably ordinance material. As far as corresponding funding, that's, that's more a budgetary decision that, that would not be in either, in, that would be in neither the bylaws nor an ordinance. That's more budgetary, I think, for the council to discuss.
Okay. So, the three big items about, that would fall under content for an ordinance would be the discussion of the three separate arms, the CRB membership selection, and then the, the kind of staff support that's needed.
Right. Those would be elements of an ordinance.
All right.
Mr. Blair, one of the, there's been some community discussion that there are, in some of these proposals, there are challenges to our authorities under Virginia law. Do you have any, are there any problems that, that you? I mean, obviously, we shouldn't consider anything that we wouldn't be allowed to do under Virginia law. And just at the outset, it seems like it would be wise to flag anything.
I think there are a few issues that have been floating out there. And I do know, in particular, has been one council candidate who has, has been vocal at times that maybe they did not think the CRB bylaws were within the statutes and the parameters that council has granted. I do think, though, based on some subsequent statements that I've read, that, for instance, the bylaws that have been proposed by the CRB do not have subpoena power nor disciplinary authority for officers. And I think those were, in fact, two of the concerns that have been expressed about whether these bylaws do conform with Dillon's rule in Virginia law. But the bylaws that I have read that have been prepared concerning both subpoena power and disciplinary authority for police officers do not contain either of those provisions in terms of, and therefore, I don't think they would violate the Code of Virginia or Dillon's rule. I would say this, I know there's been some talk about data. I think that's, that's going to require a deep dive, depending on which way the council goes with that. I mean, for instance, I can give you right off the bat. Going back to my days in juvenile court, I believe it's 161301, but I don't know right off the top of my head. But there is a provision about juvenile records that only law enforcement and parties that a court order, or is part of a court order, and I believe probation and, probation officers and a few other parties are named, but I don't know that a CRB is named for juvenile records. So, that would be one aspect when we talk about data. You know, it would take a deep dive into state statutes to see the exact limits of data as to what a CRB could look at and what it couldn't. Again, juvenile records, I do know, I, I don't believe there's any provision in there that talks about a CRB would have access to juvenile records. Now, whether the CRB would ever need juvenile records, I don't know. But again, that's part of the data conversation that would need to be had. I can foresee an instance where, you know, there may be a complaint about the officer's treatment of a juvenile. And then you get into, if somebody wanted to go to the CRB, depending on the authority the council gave the CRB, I mean, then you really do get into sort of, how would that work in terms of a juvenile, considering there's a state law that's very explicit on who can see juvenile information that's in the possession of law enforcement?
All right. So, I think discussing maybe the first item on the, I don't have your list in front of me.
Well, the, the next one would be looking at the different arms that are proposed.
Yes. So, the first thing on there is the executive director position.
Well, that's, that's the staffing question, which is a little separate. So, we have the paid staff consideration to support the CRB, but I think that is dependent on the arms that we would say that we're supporting. And so, there's the complaint in Internal Affairs. There's the audit and policy review, and then there's engagement. So, it's kind of divided by, still up some of these roles, but there's kind of three directions that we can go. And so...
I just want to offer, I mean, these are the three kind of almost functions that reflect the Human Rights Commission. So, the idea of having a way to take in complaints, a way to then review existing policy, and then a way to do community engagement. So, we've got, in my view, it feels like we have a precedent already with the Human Rights Commission. Am I interpreting that soundly?
Well, I think the Human Rights Commission does contain some of those elements.
I'm not saying, this is, this is in terms of just a framework of what they, it's not saying that the Human Rights Commission is doing this work. I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the Human Rights Commission ordinance is structured in this way, so that's the precedent that we already have. I just want to clarify that.
Right. The, the Human Rights Commission does, I mean, I, for instance, it does have the investigative authority that's, and a review process that's already in the ordinance. In terms of community engagement, I think there's something there. I don't know about an audit function right off the top of my head. I could take a look at that.
And I know that some of the discussions that have been, I was around the process, because the complaint process that they outline would parallel, it seemed like, the process that CPD would be following. And I understand there to be, there was some concern around that while those active investigations are going on, until those are closed and there's an appeal, that's when the CRB would be coming in at the appeals point in time, not carrying on parallel investigations. If we're really just going to start talking about each of these arms. I just remember that being something that was raised and as a concern.
Well, if you don't, don't mind, I would if, if somebody from the CRB would like to come up. I, I, reading the bylaws, I, I think the CRB's intent, and again, I'd prefer maybe for somebody to speak for the group, is that there could be two processes. Either an appeal of an Internal Affairs finding, or, I believe the way the bylaws, and again, I may be misinterpreting, they, they may also say if the CRB wanted to do its own investigation into a complaint that it received. They wanted that authority as well. But I'm not, again, this...
Yeah, that's what, that's what, they don't say that the CRB members would conduct the investigation. They actually think that that would be legal, but that they would, they would request that their executive director or staff member conduct a parallel investigation. It's voted on by the board by the legislature.
Okay. So, there, CRB bylaws... I'm sorry.
I would just, it's my understanding through that there was some concern with the parallel process while there's an active investigation going on.
And I think that's, again, council, I mean, when you, that's sort of a council, one thing to discuss today is, part of that, I think, is you can have a process where it's simply Internal Affairs makes its finding. CRB then serves as what I would colloquially call an appellate body. You know, then there's the issue of, can the CRB itself investigate complaints that come into it? Now, I think that if, sort of to talk to...
So, if an executive director is hired
Right.
and it's in the ordinance,
Right.
is that a process that can happen or not?
Well, I think there are a couple of issues with that. That's, that's more a question of access to records, access to the data in terms of how much access. And then there's also a procedural question of, and again, this is also policy-wise, if your CRB is a review board and the CRB is also empowered to conduct an independent investigation, you know, is the independent investigation, once it's complete, there isn't a review board for, or, or I don't, I don't know if the bylaws even contemplate if, if there was an investigation that the CRB undertook itself, and the individual who made a complaint was not satisfied with that result, was there an appellate process that was contemplated in the bylaws after that?
If they aren't satisfied with the investigation of the CRB specifically.
Right.
No, the idea would be that if they both, if there was an instance where a parallel investigation was needed, then there would be a hearing in which both bodies presented the information in that CRB hearing, but not an appellate level on, there's no, no CRB monitoring their own CRB.
Right.
So, yeah, he might be asking the same thing.
I do have a question then. So, who would reconcile a disagreement? If there was a, a case being investigated by the police department on one track and the CRB investigating its own, the same complaint on its own track, and they have come up with a different conclusion, how is that reconciled?
You mind if I come up so that it can be recorded?
No.
Unless, were you going to answer that question?
No, no.
Okay.
So, the, the CRB wouldn't have any authority to actually make determinations or discipline. They could come up with their own findings. They would make then those findings available to the city manager and to city council. And then, the city manager would make the determination of, of what happens in terms of the final findings and any disciplinary actions. And then would report back to the CRB whether he agreed with this, with the CRB or did not. Is that, answer the question?
And is there a legal issue with that?
I would need to look into that.
Okay.
Because it does seem like you would, you would have two, and, and again, I want to understand it. You would have a CRB investigator who would investigate the complaint at the same time as the Internal Affairs Division. And then they would both present their findings to the CRB to make a final recommendation, or...
I was just going to say...
Is that, yeah, that...
So, I think the, the first step is obviously that the CRB would, would have to make a determination if they felt an investigation was needed. I would think most instances would be sort of the appellate review that you're talking about. But we wanted the bylaws to have, or the ordinance to have in there, the authority to request staff to conduct an independent investigation. So, that's the first answer. And then I forgot what the other issue was.
But I think regardless, the, the police department would conduct its own investigation if an Internal Affairs complaint was filed. They, they would have to, since they are the disciplinary authority.
Yes.
So, let's break, so practically speaking, so that means that the board, I mean, I'm looking at the investigation, which refers to state law, as long as the investigation adheres to state law. So, that means we'd retain, the CRB would retain a private investigator to look into the claim?
So, you don't have to be a private investigator to conduct administrative investigations if you are an employee of the administrative body. So, the, I, this is why I don't think the CRB members themselves could conduct the investigation, but I do think that their staff personnel could.
But in either track, so what happens is the ED, so sense of the board, then you have an ED. The ED is the one who would oversee the retention of somebody to, to do an investigation.
Yeah. Either they would do that investigation, either they'd be somebody who had that skill set already, or they would retain somebody to do that.
So, how much, I mean, I, so I have a couple of questions. Some of it, then there's the part of this about outside counsel, and then there's the budgetary concerns. And this is like, just like we went through with the Human Rights Commission, like a lot of these boards. So, can, and I, I don't, I just don't know. Like, how much does an average, if there were some middle-of-the-road complexity, this is your business, I think. So, how much does a private investigation cost to accomplish it?
I would think you would, I mean, my, my thinking would that, would be that you would hire somebody in that executive director role who could, whether that's an attorney or somebody who has investigative experience, and they would do that investigation and would be able to do that under Virginia law.
So, it would be unusual to have to pay somebody on the outside?
I mean, I think you could hire an outside investigator, but I don't think that would be, I don't think that'd be necessary under this model, and it would probably cost more.
Okay. And get, so given this, given this number that we're looking at presently, it does, it seems like this could be done within...
Yeah. I think that's the idea of making sure that an ED is somebody with significant experience, you know, managing an organization, but also with, with experience in this particular field.
Okay. Thanks.
I felt like I didn't answer whatever the first question was that is now long gone out of my brain, so sorry about that.
I just, I would love, while you're here, can you kind of explain why the, the interim CRB didn't just want an appellate function? Why did, because there is a logic to that, that there's, there's a complaint process through the police department. There is a concern that there wasn't the right justice served, and so that this serves as, as an appeals board. So, why, why did the CRB feel that that wasn't enough of a role?
So, that, it's something that we felt like was necessary to put in there in case that ever became, as I said, I don't think that's, would be the primary, the function of the CRB. I think the majority of the time, they would be conducting more of that appellate review of complaints once they're done. But if a complaint, if an investigation took, you know, years, which according to some of the data from CPD has happened, then the CP, CRB would want an ability to say, does there need to be an external investigation that looks into this, to this complaint? Because under our model, the CRB would be getting monthly updates about the status of, of the investigations. And if there was a significant concern, and the majority of the, the board believed that, that it was warranted to have somebody else take a look, that would be the purpose of it, just as sort of an, an extra check on top of what we think of as an appellate check.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Blair, this, maybe for both, despite your first air also. So, another, just in trying to ask all the, all the hard questions. So, in terms of maintaining, one of the major concerns would be confidentiality.
Correct.
Especially because you have a grievance procedure, and this would be happening alongside, and there are certain protections in there. So, to open up the process. So, my, my question is, how do, how would confidentiality be enforced? And it's, so say, in the worst-case scenario, there were a member who, who did talk or produce information somehow in violation of the confidentiality requirement, which is spelled out, it just says that, "Shall not make public data that is the subject of a signed confidentiality agreement." But what's the, how does, how does that get enforced?
Well, I think there, there are a couple of things that could occur. One would be, first of all, and again, I think the data dive is something that, that will take extensive research if the council wants to go down this route as to accessibility to data, right? For instance, I believe like the juvenile statute, actually, if, let's say theoretically, there was a court order that did give the CRB access to juvenile act information, there is still, there's still criminal sanctions if the police department or any individual releases juvenile information.
Okay.
But to your point about personnel information and the like,
Yeah.
and let's say that there's a confidentiality agreement, and I guess in your hypothetical, that agreement is breached by either a staff member or a member of the CRB.
Right.
In terms of a staff member, that would be the city manager and would, would need to administer the personnel policies depending on the breach, right? Because the, the professional staff reports to the city manager.
Right.
In terms of members of the CRB, the CRB itself could, it doesn't have any enforcement power, so to speak, to, to fine or do something of that nature. The CRB could pass a resolution expressing its disappointment... The CRB could pass a resolution expressing its disappointment. The CRB could ask the council to remove the member from the CRB, or the council itself could take action to remove the CRB member.
But there's no, you know, I wonder if there's a logic, and I would be curious about other examples, thinking, thinking this through in how, in our form of government, the council managed form of government, to have the, more of the investigation and the transparency to data happening under the ED, who then is under, like, there is actually some enforceability under the, in the staff form of government, which, under the city manager, which you all are talking about in your presentation some.
Right.
Because that is, it does create a, I can see the, the, I can see the concerns with that too, because then you have one sort of CEO on top of the whole thing, but at least you would have, the mission of the ED would be to investigate these complaints, but they would be the one who would, could have access to full data, and they could brief the board. But I think there is a, I, anyway, this is, there, there's no real other mechanism. It's not like under a protective order or anything like that.
Correct, there is no protective order.
And there's no remedy for, if, other than removing a member from the board.
I think.
I was wondering what, what remedy we have if that was liable to?
Well, I think, to your, to your question, there, there's another model, um, that you could look at, which would be more, and, and again, when I talk about data, one, one party that does need to be consulted on all of this is the Commonwealth's Attorney, for instance. Because I did read in the bylaws that, the draft bylaws that were presented at, was it April seventeenth, I think is when there was the meeting? It appeared in those bylaws, but I don't recall the specific provision that no CRB process would be initiated until the criminal case was complete. Is that the intent, that is the intent of a CRB? So, that's part of this, that no CRB investigation would take place until the criminal process is over.
Where is that in the?
Right. Do you mind sending that to everyone? Because I can't get my hands on it.
I mean, the line, this says, the, the board shall have the authority to receive, review, investigate, and make findings back regarding any and all complaints against CBE.
On page eleven, there, again, it was a sentence that said, "The board shall not in any way interfere with a criminal investigation." And I'm interpreting that to mean that the criminal investigation would be closed, the case would be over before there would be a CRB review of a matter that's appealed. But, again, I, I, I would defer, I think, uh, Mr. Bowers is, is indicating in the affirmative that is the intent of that sentence. We would probably, for finalized bylaws and ordinance, have something to that effect, that all the criminal proceeding that related to a complaint to the CRB would need to be completed before the CRB would exercise jurisdiction.
But that, I mean, it looks like that's contradicted by this sentence, which, um, so, under the, under arm one, complaints in internal affairs, just what I just said, it says, "Shall have the authority to dot-dot-dot investigate any and all complaints against CPD." There's no qualifier in that.
Yeah, that, that's the scope of the, the work, absent the criminal, and there's, and there's, so, most, most places that we've looked at have, have that, they, the by, um, CRBs should, should not consider civil or criminal, cases that are in ongoing civil or criminal proceedings. And that's, um, that's in, I think, both Virginia Beach and Fairfax, although I can't find it in Fairfax.
I think you're correct, I saw that, I believe in both as well.
So, we probably would need that qualifier in this, all empowering.
So, if it's concerning matter subject to pending criminal proceeding in any trial court, pending or anticipated civil proceeding in any trial court, or an administrative proceeding, are you, it's usually the language that's in there. And we have that flagged as, in terms of things to, to continue working on. And with regard to your question, Mr. Signer, about why not give all of that power to the executive director? And I think the, the, the people who have come to our meetings and been engaged with it have been really adamant that the, the community have a say in this, and there's, you know, over two hundred boards across the country who have significant community civilian impact in this regard and oversight. And I haven't talked to anybody who's had an, an issue with the confidentiality agreements. My understanding is that those are usually crafted as part of the memorandum of understanding and part of collaborative relationship with the police departments that the CRBs are working with. Do that, do that answer that?
It's helpful, yeah, I'd like to see more about that.
If I may add, just, I'd like to add one more point in response to Mr. Signer. Um, I, I completely understand your concern, but it's precisely for that reason that we think that training is so important here. And that's another role that the executive director would play, is, um, you know, there's always a risk that someone will let slip, whether they're a professional or a layperson, something that they ought not to let slip. But that's why we think there needs to be professional guidance without stripping away, uh, civilian influence and participation. So, sure, there's always a risk there. Effective training, which requires sort of front-end, um, dollars and effort, can go a long way in terms of prevention of that concern.
Okay, thank you.
Did you wanna say something? Mr. Murphy had something.
So, I, I think you're getting up to the point, and I just wanna prompt the really specific question that I think is the crux of when you go to the flow chart that is proposed by the CRB. The question, really, uh, from the staff perspective, because I think there's great agreement about the CRB having a role in investigations, particularly at the appeal level. The question is, can they vote as a board to conduct the investigation concurrent to the time that the IA investigation, internal affairs investigation, is happening? Prior to the employee decision about whether maybe discipline could be administered, whether they have their right to due process and appeal themselves about possible discipline, and I guess in some circumstances, maybe even a criminal charge. So, it's, I mean, the question, I think, from the staff would need to be, how is the CRB gonna act at the same time before that process has run its course?
So, um, and? Did you have a?
That was, that was basically the point I was raising when I even went down this track, was just understanding the delineation between these, what I was perceiving as parallel tracks. But I feel like everything that's been shared is making me feel like they aren't intended to be a parallel track. So, that is really more an appellate function, and then when there are cases, there is a recognition that we have to go through our own internal affairs investigation before there's a handoff.
Yeah, that's how I am.
So, in terms of the executive director position, they'll intake, track all complaints, receive weekly updates from internal affairs with any new complaints, internal, external, coming from CPD. Executive Director maintains communication with complainants throughout the entire complaint process, presents to the board at a monthly meeting status of all complaints in internal affairs. Will conduct independent investigations at the request of the board, and will organize the logistics of holding a hearing at the request of the board.
To sort of put us in reverse for a second, to go, to go with your executive director question, I do think, though, there has to be some recognition that if you have an executive director, and they're responsible for both intake investigation and advising the CRB, there, there could be a potential there for some conflicts. But if, if that person is tasked with the investigation themselves, and then they're also tasked with advising the CRB and being the CRB's staff person, there, there can be perceived conflict, just as there can be, and, and I do plan to get to this with the legal staff, as to the advice that's been brought up many times about the city attorney's office advising this board as well. Um, I think the same applies to an executive director if they're given investigatory powers into a parallel track. And then I don't really understand, at that point, if they are doing the investigating and they are presenting to the CRB, again, if they are the CRB's permanent staff, that does, in some ways, present almost, at least to the public, a conflict of interest.
So, I guess, how is that, um, 'cause they, because that entire process would be happening internally, right? They would be investigating it at the end of the city's process if they had a complaint about how that was handled, so, right?
Well, you, that's a good que, and, and again, maybe, I, I, I'm trying to understand, when we say parallel, it's one thing to, to say?
So, I think we're gonna remove parallel, right? No.
So, is that what you wanted to do? So, I didn't, I didn't know what you were removing.
So, there is an investigation.
By the internal affairs.
At the end of that investigation, if there are grievances filed by the employee, if there is an appeals process, then that process will still be put on hold. At the end of all that is possible, then the CRB could say, "We want to do our own investigation of the process." Is that what we've said?
I don't think.
Okay.
That's right, I mean, I can't speak for the entire board right now. But, um, I, I don't think the suggestion was that we are removing the possibility of a parallel track altogether. I think we're suggesting that that ought to be a rarity. Um, in the main, uh, in most cases, if we have an expeditious IA process, um, the, the CRB and the executive director would, would do its work in what, you know, might be considered in a pellet model, or, you know, a, a link in the chain after, um, the IA completes its work. But there's exceptional circumstances under which we think it, and we've heard from the public, that they have concerns about a past history. We know that the department is trying to deal with this past history, and we, we appreciate this, of, um, investigations being slow-walked. And so, if an investigation were slow-walked, or something else were to happen, and we would want the board to be able to at least take some action to let, um, the complainant know that their complaint is being, um, heard and, um, uh, considered. The limits of what the board could do in that circumstance, you know, is obviously part of an ongoing discussion. But I, I, I don't think it's quite right to say we're eliminating that, except to say that it, it might not happen all that often.
So, if there are some, so I think there are two things, um, just now. So, if there are some legal challenge with the parallel process, you said that you're checking that or not?
Well, I will check on that, but I think the, the, the issue with that parallel process, and again, we're, we're talking very hypothetically here, but let's say, an individual, their, the criminal matter is completed. They feel like there was mistreatment from the police department. They file an internal affairs complaint. The CRB, per Mr. Bowers, and, and feel free, but the hypothetical, they feel, the complainant feels that the process isn't working quickly enough. Then the issue would be, could the CRB, at that point, initiate its own investigation while the CPD is conducting its own internal affairs investigation at the same time? And that's, I just wanna be clear, that is what you're, you're talking about in terms of a parallel process.
That's right, um, and I recall what I was gonna say, um, previously, which is, I think, the source of some of the confusion is that we're actually talking about, um, two separate processes happening potentially concurrently with, um, a, a CRB investigative process. There is what the, uh, county attorney, uh, the Commonwealth attorney may well be doing. Uh, and that's where the work of the CRB would stop, full stop. Just like my understanding is, IA process is supposed to stop, full stop. Having talked to Joe Potania, um, his office has the understanding is that Joe Potania's office takes precedent. And so, that's true. We're not proposing that we would ever run any kind of process concurrent with, um, uh, his office's work. But then there's, with respect to the internal CPD process, the IA process, that's where, um, uh, we at least foresee the possibility, albeit maybe a rarity, that there'd be a, 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 a parallel process.
Could I, could I simply ask, sort of, another, and I know there's, there's a draft bylaws, but part of this is to help the policymaking process. There's another thought that pops into my head here, which would be, what if the CRB, instead of having a parallel investigative process, had a procedure in the ordinance where if they felt that a complaint wasn't receiving its, um, I, I, I use the word quickness, or, or do, the due timeline wasn't being followed, that it itself could have the executive director speak to the city manager about talking to the police chief and getting that process, you know, any concerns about the process itself?
I mean, I can't speak for the board, obviously, but that's, that's an interesting idea. I would also add, you know, we've heard from community members as well that there's, um, a level of distrust for the internal CPD process. And so, it's off, also, it wasn't just a, a concern with, um, slow-walking or a lack of expeditiousness, um, in the IA front. It's that we may have under-reporting, and there may be valid reasons for that, there may be invalid reasons for that, may be a, a misperception, but it, we want people to feel that there is a venue to which they can, um, appeal and be heard when, um, they've got allegations of misconduct. So, that's another concern, which is external to the concern about, um, you know, a less than fully expeditious process.
So, under-reporting in terms of complaints?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that gets back to the ED conversation I was trying to have. So, what, um, in terms of complaint process? 'Cause right now, if a community member started with the CRB, the CRB could potentially have the complaint before the police department has the complaint, right? So, is there a way for the, um, like, if it's an online, if there's an online complaint process, is there a way for that complaint to go just to alert the CRB and the police department both that there is a complaint? So, then everybody will have access to the plain, to the complaint? If the complaint comes to the CRB first, then, of course, they have to give it to the police department for. And if a complaint goes to the CPD in writing, then there has to be something in the bylaws to where the CPD will make sure that the CRB has access, you know, that get a copy of the complaint. So, at least you know when complaints come in, is there a problem with that process? 'Cause then everyone would at least have the complaint, complaint, and know that there is something that's supposed to be worked on.
You know, thinking about it, and, and again, you, you're not asking about the investigatory power, just the complaint intake. I believe Fairfax County has a model where the, their own CRB can intake a complaint. And then that complaint is automatically referred to the Fairfax County Police Department. I believe that's their process, that they, they can, in fact, intake complaints. And then, as far as somebody who complains to the Charlottesville Police Department and Internal Affairs, um, I think one thing that, uh, that's sort of, sort of a novel idea, but I think we could try to work around that complaint process is there's something called the Government Data Collection and Dissemination Act. And I need to look into that, because I believe there, there was a case just recently up in Fairfax, ironically, we're talking about that, um, about license plate readers. And the license plate readers, you can't collect information about a citizen and give it to another government agency without informing that citizen.
Got it.
So, if the CPD was? So if the CPD was required to provide the complaint to, um, the CRB, I think, I think that can occur, but it just, they would need to have some disclaimer that when you make a complaint to CPD, it's going to go to the CRB.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there should be a way, I mean, I don't think that most citizens would think, no, right? They probably wouldn't, so if we can just add that to the complaint paperwork, and then everybody at least will have the initial complaints that come in. And so then you'll know that what's being worked on, and that should eliminate the fears of under-reporting or the CRB not knowing what, um, is coming into the police department.
I, I have another follow-up, though. So the, the, the CRB can also be the, um, entity that, um, submits a complaint on behalf of a complainant, right? So it could be that that's where the intake happens directly through the CRB.
Right.
In which case, then CRB would have its own requirements to get to the, um, IA in a timely fashion. Okay.
So I'm just thinking that that might eliminate what Josh just said, in terms of everyone, I mean, both bodies would get the initial complaints. So we'll know the timeline, date, they, they'll know the timeline, date they come in, nature of the complaint initially, and then the process would start, and whatever that timeline is supposed to be, they'll know whether it's being followed accordingly. And then hopefully, the individual who filed the complaint would know how to contact, um, CRB and CPD for their next steps.
So I'm, so does this mean that the IA, sorry, that the CRB is being noticed about any initiation of a investigation through IA? So that they're getting information, so there's total transparency on the, like, the beginning of any file?
Yes.
So, or does it mean that, that CRB, at that point, can or does start beginning a simultaneous?
No, just the notification.
They just get noticed, that's how it is.
But then when you were talking about, Madam Mayor, about the, from the complainant's perspective, so if, if it, whatever they're being advised in that initial moment, check this box, check this box. When they check the box for CRB, do they believe that something is happening over there?
Well, I think we can make that language clear.
Why just not make the notice automatic? So every time that there is a complaint that begins, CRB, because that would distinguish, I'm looking at the Virginia Beach rules right now, like, Virginia Beach really is just, it is an appeal of an investigation, again. So it would be different if, if there was a, if every, in every instance, CRB knew of a complaint.
Yeah. But I think what the concern that, um, the concern that, um, was just talked about in terms of the under-reporting, that at least will help, hopefully, um, alleviate that initial concern, which will have the, everyone would know what's coming in and what's supposed to be worked on instead of feeling that, um, they don't have knowledge of. So then we're back to, the entire process would go through with, uh, um, in CPD, in terms of the investigation of the complaint. And then at the end of that, then the CRB, if they felt, in these rare instances, that they needed to do an investigation, then they would have, but they would have knowledge of the complaint coming in.
I wonder, I wonder if you could set it up, I mean, some of the concern here is, would you by default be setting up a parallel process? Or could you set it up so that there would be some hurdle that, that the complaint would have to reach to get to the point where you would start? Well, no, or like a three-quarters vote, or something like that, like, like a vote hurdle? And you'd say, it really would have to be, like, there would have to be something going on in, in the facts as alleged, that, and the CRB would say, we're, yeah, we're deciding here, but, but we would set it up so that you'd have to get to, like, a significant vote of the members. We haven't even discussed the composition, but that would be, then we would be like, okay, it's not, in every instance, you can just, you're basically setting up two different machines that are running next to each other.
Yeah, so that, that is part of the idea of this notification, this dual notification of all complaints, that the CPD and the CRB would have almost sort of parallel data-tracking systems. And so that they would, everybody would know what was going on with the investigation of a complaint, even if the CRB, at that time, doesn't have actual access to that Internal Affairs investigative file. Every month, the executive director would be giving the CRB an update on the progress of that Internal Affairs investigation. So that would require the ED having access to that. And if the CRB, by, whether it's a supermajority or whatever we come to, to agree on, is a, um, decides, something, something is going on with this process, that we would like to have some further investigative ability to look into this file, then they would make that request. That's the concept as it stands.
So is an update, um, that you're thinking about simply, uh, um, this case is still in court?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yep, it could be that simple. It could be, um, two people were interviewed and the body cam footage was reviewed. They now have three weeks to tell the complainant X, Y, and Z. We'll give you an update next month as to whether that's occurred. So that, that's almost sort of an auditing function of the IA process that either the auditor or the ED could do, but we envision the ED doing.
In relative to the timeline concern of how long these things can take, I'm assuming there's, there's policies in place for, for how long these things should take? And if there's, if there's not, then we need to be raising a flag. I mean, if, if they exceed those policies, then there should be some process to overcome that, that policy was not followed. I'm just trying to understand how that plays out, just to kind of, because that's been raised as a concern.
Well, I think it's, I think it's Policy 517, I believe, under, under the PD. But I think it's, it's, you have forty-five, no. Not the chief. Well, there's no, but there's a thirty-day notification.
Well, we'll help you through, um, the policies, and we gave in a, a really robust presentation to the CRB on walking through all of the steps, and then the things that could help you through the process. There is an initial forty-five days from the first time the complainant makes a complaint with CPD to resolve that complaint. After the forty-five days has expired, and prior to the forty-five days expiring, the investigating officer, detective, or supervisor must submit and request directly from me a thirty-day extension. Contained within that thirty-day extension, the complainant is notified that there is a thirty-day extension going on. They must also say now, um, what is the reason for the extension? What, um, period, what things they'll be covering during that time? Are they investigating? Is it still currently in court? Um, the detective, or are the accused is on vacation, or has been deployed? Um, like, we have somebody recently, we can't get to them, they've been deployed for the last six months, so that complaint is still hanging out there. Um, and then, when the expected completion date is. So it's not enough to just say, "I want thirty more days," I need to know exactly. And they put that in writing, it is now added to the file. As you can do, as to help you with this notification process of the complaints that are coming on. Um, as you know, I am now posting on our website, the actual case numbers, the date they come in, the case number that comes in, the nature of the complaint, um, and what the status is, whether it's open, under investigation, pending review. We're due to update that, um, for the 2019. As you know, I did a review of all 2017 and all 2018 cases, so that we could then close those cases as well and put a compliance team in, as well as an auditing team, for each of our Internal Affairs investigations. Um, as for intake and complaint process, um, it's easy enough to just post those on all of our websites, so that you have that on transparency and open data, and everybody would have access to that, not just the CRB. That's the access that we put out for the entire public to see on our websites. So that helps you with, where are we in the processes? You can see that on a case was taken on on this date, it's still open? And then, where is it in terms of what the review is? At the end of all of the cases, the complainant does have an actual opportunity to appeal. Um, if they do not agree with the decisions, they can come in and have a conversation, which we talk to them about the entire process, um, and where there might be some opportunity to have further discussions on their perspective and their point of view about the things that they complained about, um, as well. The complaint is also notified of any collateral, um, violations that we have found along the way. So if the complainant complained about discourtesy, um, it is in our policies. We notify them that we may have found a violation of the body-worn camera policy, or that there was a violation of our reporting policies. We notify the complainant of that as well. So not just the things that they initially complained about, but the entire process and everything that has occurred, um, along the way. So hopefully, that clears up, um, at least a little bit more of the conversation and confusion about what may, um, actually occur along the way.
Okay, so Chief Brackney, it seems like a rather comprehensive.
Excuse me, um, I'm sorry.
It seems like a rather comprehensive way in which I'm doing things. Um, one question, maybe if there is, just to kind of quell any other, um, any other thing, yeah, that might be out there, is it possible for you maybe to go over this as well with the CRB?
I did, I extensively went over it with the CRB about where we were, um, and actually sent that information not only to the CRB, to council, and to the People's Coalition about what the process we, um, were going through. We had heard that the community, we had heard, and it was true, and, and as you know, I've come down and owned, that there were complaints that had been out there for years, which triggered me doing an audit of where were we, and then how could we close, um, those complaints and give the, not only the citizens the, um, service they deserved, where we were in the process, but officers having these complaints over their heads for two years. So there's still that component of it as well. So I've been extremely public about that, that we were not meeting the expectations of the community. Um, and it's not that the cases, um, should have been that challenging to even investigate. They were demeanor complaints, um, that we could have reviewed body-worn camera and, and quickly got back to the complainant. We now have systems in place, where not only are we auditing, but we have a compliance team to ensure that we're following our own policies.
Was there any feedback from the CRB or People's Coalition in regards to other items that they would like to have seen on there? Again, just to quell any, um, I don't know, misinformation, or just kind of tension that's out there? What, did they have any feedback for you?
So, um, I presented in, I believe it was possibly March to them, and about a month later, I received, um, as I forwarded to the, um, council, um, an eight-page document asking me about particular cases and things like that. I think it was more dissatisfaction with how the previous system was and could have occurred. In terms of the ability to take in complaints, uh, the CRB is not a standalone in that it can be also just taking complaints. As you know, we take complaints, third-party complaints, anonymous complaints. We, you can email, you can text, you don't have to sign anything, you can mail it into us. And our policies say that we investigate them as robustly as if there was a complainant to respond back to. So there is a lot of avenues to do that, um, including adding a CRB as an opportunity to take in complaints and be the advocate for the person, um, in taking that complaint.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. So, um, guess we add that, as long as that's, that may be processed, um, and that'll help initially. So, once the process is over, the review process within the CPD, then you're gonna check to see if there's any problems with, um, there shouldn't be an issue, right? Now, I don't understand, that's where I think I was going, with, um, so if the, um, the executive director could be one of the first people, since they'll be the staff member receiving the complaints, they'll be the individual who's getting the monthly feedback to update the board, um, and public. And then, they would be the person who leads, at the end, if the CRB decides that there should be a process, they'll be the individual who leads them through and discusses with city management, council, whomever, what they think should, next steps should be, or the support they need.
And that's an appeal.
Correct.
Yeah, so that shouldn't be an issue.
That shouldn't be an, no.
Is that what?
That's what the pellet side of it would want.
Yes.
And I, Madam Mayor, I, I would be comfortable, because of the history here, and because of even what we've just heard about, um, I would be comfortable creating a separate process for a direct investigation by the CRB with some kind of tripwire or hurdle that they have to, like, like, like an extra vote. But I don't know if there's the, the, a higher, um, vote totals, that, that's what we discussed before, to create a direct investigation by the CRB, that would not be appellate, so they could.
So you're back to the parallel.
I'm saying that in certain, but I would like for there to be some barrier or hurdle that you have to do that doesn't make that a default. So like a three-quarters vote, two-thirds vote of the board, something like that, that's.
I just want to point a clarification, too, because one question that came up was the timeline. And what I heard Chief Brackney just say is that they have forty-five days to respond to a complaint, and then there's a thirty-day extension. Is that correct? So seventy-five days total for, for an investigation?
But I don't understand why he's continuing to talk.
Just ask a clarification question.
From Mr. Fogel, like, we just heard from, we just heard from Mr., we just heard from Chief Brackney.
No, just, well, you weren't told, just wait, hold on, wait, hold on, everybody. So, can we? So.
Your question is, we have forty-five days to complete the first round of investigations. The notifications go out immediately, um, it says that you will be notified, there's no timeline. But they go out and meet the letter, we send them, um, very quickly, that you have filed a complaint, that we have received your complaint, and you're, you're assigned a case number now. Previously, that didn't occur as well. So that you know exactly where you are in the process. But they do have to have forty-five days, and then they can appeal, or, I'm sorry, then they can ask for an extension.
Okay. So question for CRB, in terms of thought process around if this, since this is a big part of the, um, source of tension, if the timeline isn't met, right? Then maybe that's something that you all can think about in terms of, if the policy is in place, the timeline isn't being met, so there, there isn't this process where there's a couple years' worth of unsolved, um, complaints, what would that look like? Do you have a, you want to come up?
I'm still confused about what precisely the timeline is, because what I'm hearing, and I could be wrong about this, and I'd like the chief to correct me if I'm wrong, but there's forty-five days is the initial. After that, there, it, it's not that there can be a thirty-day extension. There can be indefinite thirty-day extensions. So it's, it's, it's great that notice about these extensions, and I don't know if there needs to be some expression of reasons for the delay are given, but like, it, it, there's not actually a timeline. There's not some time after which this should have been completed, and in fact, it hasn't been completed. I mean, I suppose we could draft something that said, you know, the first forty-five days would be hands-off. Again, I don't want to speak for the entire board, we're forty-five days plus a thirty-day extension. But, um, I'm just confused to the extent that we're making pronouncements about the timeline.
So what?
We put the timeline in it.
Okay, so what should happen now is, there should be a policy, everybody will have copies of that policy, there should be access to it. I guess what you and the board can discuss is, if this timeline isn't met, and if the updates that you're receiving about why this case isn't moving forward, if you all do not agree with that process, what, and if you could think about this, too?
I, I have, I have a couple thoughts.
Okay.
If, if, I think part of this, in the hypothetical realm, is we're not, part of the connective tissue that maybe isn't being talked about is that executive director role. And I would.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Right, exactly. And I think to, to that point, part of this, without having a confrontational model, would be, you would have an executive director, the police department would have the initial forty-five days. Then, let's say there was a thirty-day extension granted. I would envision a process where the police chief, the executive director, would be talking on a regular basis about IA complaints. The executive director would probably talk to the police chief and ask her, you know, what's going on with case 2019-8? The police chief would then provide an update to the executive director, and the executive director would then talk to the CRB about that. And, and that's sort of the connective tissue, I think, when we talk, again, whether you want to use the word timeline, deadline, or, or just time periods, sort of, it is, it is correct. There could be an additional thirty-day, or more thirty-day extensions granted.
But I think what, um, Counselor Cale was talking about, and the concerns of the CRB also, is that if this has been the history, past history, if the Chief Brackney said that she's just completing. that she's just completing complaints from twenty seventeen, right? So that is what they are concerned about, um, not her complaints, she wasn't the police chief then. But if she's just completing those complaints, then what can be put in place so that if that's the case? So that if ten years from now, this is how, five years, a year, whatever, what can be put in place? What would, to make sure that the complaints are heard in a timely manner and just not put on hold, extended indefinitely, or not taken seriously? So I think if there can be some language in here for that, then that may get us to the point where we are moving from the parallel investigation. We're moving to, you know, this collaborative relationship, understanding that this is the process. But if it's not happening according to policy, then what is the ask there?
What's the trigger?
I think one thing that could be the, the, the trigger, to use your, your phraseology, is, um, maybe once the CRB expresses a concern to their executive director about an investigation, then the executive director should, before the next CRB meeting, have a meeting with the city manager and the police chief to discuss those concerns. And then that should occur before an investigation is, is initiated by the CRB. If that's, if that, is that what you're talking about, sort of a, a process that? No, you're, you're talking about just a pure parallel?
No, I'm saying, no, not, not by default, so it would not always be parallel. You would have some, it would lag, it would be an appellate system, except in extraordinary cases. And you'd have a mechanism set up to define that extraordinariness, which would be, you know, like, in some case, it'd be a supermajority vote. You're talking about a meeting, consultative process, which, which sometimes those things are spelled out. I mean, I've seen that in corporate things, where you say if there's a problem in the lease, whatever, then there shall be a meeting between the two parties. You can do that, but that doesn't necessarily resolve, you know, like, if it's a really big thing that's stuck and it is being, it, it's like creating the circumstances of concern that you guys are talking about, which has happened in the past, then how does this body decide to involve itself, you know, without becoming a full-on parallel system? And so a-
And I mean, this isn't a, you know, bad idea, this is actually good, hopefully, I think. But it also will, you know, help internally to make sure that these complaints are handled in a timely manner, because you don't wanna trigger a situation where there's a parallel, um, there's inability for the CRB to open up the process, um.
I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, I think this would be something that we haven't had a lot of conversation about, what would trigger this parallel process? And I think it would be great if the board could talk about that and then present something that's more robust, that sort of answers these questions. And while I think it's valuable to hear this, and it's giving me a lot of notes to write of things that I think we all need to discuss, I don't know that the CRB is gonna be able to give a determination, at least on this point, of sort of what we would think that.
Yeah.
I don't like the word trigger, but what we think that.
Yeah, so think about the timeline, think about it, it would be after, what, uh,
Yeah.
Forty-five day, one thirty-day extension, three thirty-day extension? You know, just, you know, in your discussions, just, um, if the update is that it's in, um, the Commonwealth Attorney's purview, then it wouldn't be, you know, just-
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And this is just my elementary knowledge of what's going on, but.
But in general, obviously, with this conversation, it sounds like council is interested in us pursuing some form of, or we call it executive director or not, with this role.
Yeah, it sounds like it's critical.
Yeah.
I am.
Okay, so then we have the auditor piece, which I know that-
And I, yeah, I meant, just in, in terms of how we're gonna do the, I, I have to leave right at five, so I just wanted to, I, I have like six other things, I just wanna, I can reel them off or whenever, as we're going through this, then I, we're, two other items of discussion?
Composition of the board is for sure.
Okay. We, we should, I just wanted to.
Relative to the auditor, I know that you had asked for some information on some current job positions that are already within, or being sought within the organization.
Yeah, so, um, are those jobs posted or?
Yeah, I pulled them directly, I'm sorry, yes, ma'am, I pulled them directly off our websites, um, they're already posted.
Okay.
Um, and I also know Captain Duran is here, but it, what the response level has been for those.
Okay.
They've just recently posted.
Have you all CRB members looked at, okay?
So for the public's recognition, just as I'm looking at, um, there's two additional positions that-
So you could, so Jess, I'll just give some feedback, then you can talk, but, in response to the, um, feedback from CRB, People's Coalition, you know, in terms of what, um, at, the conversations around the data collection, um, when, and how to, how the data, the system was functioning or not functioning, then, um, am I correct? Okay, um, that Chief Brackney looked at, um, potential positions within CPD to help with that. Um, and so those are the two, you just wanna read.
Yeah, it's an additional position for internal affairs, as well as adding, um, a sensitive data specialist, and that would include investigative detentions. And there's, there's details available online on what those are, those are the two, those are the two positions. So I think the question is, and we've had, just throwing around, how does that kind of fold in with what's being described and recommended here as, under the police auditor role?
So the, um, if you all just wanna talk briefly about the position, um, and why it was included in the way, and I know you have, but if you just wanna do that briefly, um, here. And then, or maybe this is something else you wanna table and look at those positions to see. Um, and I understand that, um, you're still talking about, um, trusting the current process that's in place, but moving, if, if, if there's a way to move past that, does those positions, um, get what, what you're asking for?
I, I, we haven't seen the-
I understand that.
I haven't seen the position, so I, I have no idea.
I think it's, I, I was just trying to get a sense, yep, where council kind of stood on that. Cause I, I think it's definitely, that should be evaluated, what these current positions are gonna accomplish and get feedback from the CRB on that, I agree.
So I wish we had sent it to them, uh, before, and maybe that's my, I just asked for them yesterday in terms of, come on up.
I, I, you were totally right, we need to see the positions before the board can weigh in, um.
Do you have a copy?
The push, well, I, I mean, I can't, I, I can't-
I understand you, but you may be able to read it briefly.
But, um, I mean, the push for a civilian review board, a principle, uh, uh, desire of, um, the community and the people of the city of Charlottesville was for something that was independent from the CPD. So I actually, I commend the CPD for, um, developing these internal positions to get past some of the data keeping, um, and data dissemination problems of the past. That's necessary, but it, I, no matter what the position looks like, it seems like it would be difficult, if not impossible, for it to serve the purposes that the board was set forth to serve. Um, the purposes set forth in the resolution, as long as that remains within the CPD, because that destroys, um, the kind of independence that we're talking about. Um, but, you know, that, that's me just talking extemporaneously about a job description I haven't seen. But I, it's a, it's an, it's enough for me to worry about it a little bit, that it's a job description for a position within the CPD itself.
So months ago, there was a request for someone to go into the police department and go through the, um, the chief, the system, to get the data themselves. And that was a request.
With the People's Coalition?
I don't remember who, but that was the request. And so, um, that's not, under any conversation that we've had, something that is a possibility.
Getting, getting what?
To go into the police department and have total access to the police department, um, files.
No, I don't think, that's not, that is not, we are proposing that-
That's not what the CRB is asking for.
Okay, can you come to the?
So we're proposing that the executive director and the auditor have access to all of those files contemporaneously, and that the CRB have access to it once the CRB gets involved, to the, to the internal affairs process. In terms of stop and frisk, in terms of arrest data and all of that, that would be for the staff, so the auditor and the executive director to have access to. But this is part of our, our desire to have the conversation about access by all parties. It's, I think we've envisioned that there would be different amounts of access by different people, depending on what their role are, or role is in this, in this group. And so the, the need to, to, to kind of hash that out with the police department, in my mind, is why it's important to have that conversation before we pass an ordinance and before we pass bylaws and all of that. Because the, the access to the systems, in, in all of the oversight models, there may not, it depends on what they're looking at. But if they're looking at complaints, they get access to the full IA file. If they're looking at, if it's an auditor who's looking at use of force incidents, they get access to the full file for use of force, for the, that use of force incident.
I would just add to my point about the, um, welcoming and commending the CPD for developing these roles. It, it, I mean, I, I don't think these roles would, would ever supplant the need for an auditor, but indeed, they would make the jobs of all of these employees of the city, the auditor and then the internal positions within the CPD easier, because these two groups of people could interface.
Yes.
Um, the data expert, um, within the CPD would be the very person to take this off the chief's plate, frankly, on a day-to-day basis. It wouldn't have to be the chief that is necessarily doing the legwork, interacting with the auditor. Um, the auditor could get with the person or people filling these roles, um, and, you know, communications would be robust and, um, easily have.
So what stage in terms of the files, auditing files, what stage did you all foresee that happen at?
Contemporaneous.
Yeah.
Yeah, just, they, they're-
So the things that the resolution pointed us to address sort of a, um, mechanism of oversight for the, um, arrests, uh, stop and frisk, investigative detentions, and, um, use of force, that would be the auditor's role to provide a contemporaneous audit of the CPD's system, both system and, um, individual cases. So they are looking much more in sort of a grander, what are the policies? What policy recommendations could be made? What training recommendations could be made? How are those policies being enforced? Are they being enforced properly across the board, not just relative to civilian complaints about one particular officer? It's much more of the sort of review of the systemic functionality of the police department.
So can you tell me if this is a CPD, this is gonna be a city employee?
Mm-hmm.
Um, could, how is that different from, and you all haven't looked, but how is that different from someone who's doing the work now that's currently being posted on the website?
So, I mean, there would be the, the level of independence, they would not be an officer, they would not, they would not answer to the chief of police, they would answer to the city manager. Um, there's a number of cities, including Tucson, one of the, the head of NACOL, and one of the women who conducted the training for us is the independent police auditor of Tucson. And she has a role where she basically accesses the police department system in the cases that are of her purview, and then files pretty comprehensive, you know, dozens of pages, if not hundreds of pages of reports, including recommendations and, um, needs based on her review of files and her engagement as part of the community outreach that's also done with their CRB there, which is part of our proposal.
Just one more question.
Yeah.
So if the, once you all look at the position, if the data specialist auditor is, um, is a direct supervisor, is the city manager versus the police chief, then you're saying that that is?
Yeah, that would be the, that would make them an independent, um, employee who is not an employee of the police department. And most of the, when we looked sort of at this auditor model, they, I mean, it depends on the type of government, obviously, but I, I did not find, at least in terms of, if you're talking about overview of a police department, I did not find as many models that had somebody within the police department doing that audit as much as a move in sort of the civilian oversight world, which involves more than just volunteer CRB members, but more civilians as in non-police personnel. The, the movement in the, in the world of civilian oversight is to have additional professional oversight that comes from outside of the department. Yeah, my question was just to run, that, I have the same question you did, so.
Okay. So that's a, maybe a question for us to get some feedback on internally, city management and police chief in terms of, um, I mean, in my world, I wouldn't see, like, that it's, um, that if you did not trust the process, that you was, then begin to trust it if it went directly to the city manager over the police, um, chief, but, you know, I, I don't get it, I don't get that part of it, but, um.
I'm having to send you some of the job descriptions for the independent police auditors, which would be different than an internal police auditor, and then you could look and sort of see what you think the differences would be and which one you prefer.
Mayor Walker, one other, I'm just concerned, just on the ED discussion, very specific. I, I was worried about the, shall hire, city council shall hire the executive director without term. City council may remove the executive director or a voting board member for cause only, and a removal for cause is authorized upon a vote of no confidence by at least seven voting members. That seems to be extraordinary in terms of employment commitments for the city council, and I get it as a bid.
I think, I think that John already addressed that in his feedback to us.
Yeah.
Do you think that's fair?
Yeah, I think so. So that's, okay.
Do we wanna move on to the composition?
Yes.
Of the board?
So, um, any other questions with the auditor? And could you, um, Ms. Thomas, could you send the CRB the job description? Do you have that?
Were you on those emails this morning, or yesterday?
Job descriptions.
From the chief?
They're on the website, they're on the city website.
Okay.
I offer a comment briefly, I know you all are on a tight timeline, but, um, I did wanna go back to the parallel track model of the, um, I guess what we'd been calling original jurisdiction, but similar idea that the, um, CRB could initiate its own investigation of complaints. And I, I feel like city council has really been latching on to the delayed timeline as the motivation for the reason that the CRB would vote to do that. But in the People's Coalition's work, um, listening to the community and what they wanted from this CRB, which I know the initial CRB has tried, like, has had a mighty effort to really bring bylaws, not that just they think will work well, but that are responsive to the community's desires, probably the most common theme we heard is that for the CRB to be effective, it had to have this ability to conduct independent investigations. And that was not only coming from a historical issue with delayed responses and unanswered complaints, but also concerns with the adequacy of the investigation. So I, I just offered that to say when, and, and I, I agree with the CRB members that a lot of community, it might not be necessary in every case to have an investigation, that's not the default, as, um, Councilman Signer was saying, but that the trigger is not just a delay, um, that there may need to be a broader conception of what triggers, if there's some concern with the, um, the invest, adequacy of the, um, IA investigation, um.
No, and I think they were gonna compile a list, right?
So there needs to be criteria?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then the other, um, the one other piece I wanted to mention, but there's a question about the People's Coalition and the request to access CPD data. What really the request was, was for a, um, community member that had data expertise to sit down with the person doing the analysis of investigative detentions. At the time, it was just investigative detentions, to understand what the process was. And I really think that speaks to Sarah's point about, um, having a mechanism that creates trust in whatever the data is that's being released. Um, and there, I think that was the intention of the independent auditor, that there may be a different response to data production from, um, someone who's not directly employed by the CPD. So I just wanted to clarify what that request from the People's Coalition was. Thank you.
Thank you. But to my colleagues, we're still talking about city employees throughout. It's just that these employees from the CRB would be directly reporting to the city manager through the ED. That's right, we're not talking about creating by ordinance an independent authority like a.
CRHA.
Like a CRHA.
Housing Authority, that's my understanding.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
The CRHA is a political subdivision that has its own authority through the state. Any employee of the CRB is still reports to the city manager.
Okay.
So, one thing I'm interested in, if, if we do choose to go this route, just listening in and reading a great deal of the materials, will there be, or does the CRB currently have an appetite for a counselor to also serve on this board?
As an ex officio.
No, but I mean, not in the ex officio capacity, but voting power. So you want it completely, no, I know that's what it said, I wanted to hear specifically from you.
Yeah. Yeah, so the proposal is that there's, there be a city council counselor on the board who is a non-voting member. And also somebody with significant police experience who's a non-voting member on the board to provide input. And that the city attorney or his designee, or if there were to be outside counsel, that they would be present at every meeting too, to ensure that they're following all, you know, all of the legal.
Right, I didn't ask this during our last session, but one thing in regard, specifically in regards to that, Mr. Blair, correct me if I'm wrong, but I'm not sure if we have any other commissions in which there is a counselor or a rep and they don't have voting power. I'm not saying that we have to, I'm just thinking about the precedent, because what I do worry about, you know, you could say, what, what I am concerned about is if there is a, a new council four years from now. And there is another issue in which there needs to be another board or commission created. And will they say, you know, well, no, we need to have, that there doesn't need to be voting power because the CRB didn't get to do it. I mean, again, just the, the precedent that's being set.
If I may, Counselor Bellamy, the Place Design Task Force, the planning commissioner and the counselor is ex officio.
Okay, so that's what, I wasn't aware, okay.
But in counterpoint, also on the retirement commission, the counselor is a voting member. So I think there are different.
There are different things.
As the housing authority.
Right, housing authority as well.
Is there a reason, I think I know, I'm sure I know, but just for the record, like, why you don't want, or why the CRB does not want the attorney or the counselor to have voting power?
I don't know that we've come up with an official reason from the.
Oh, I thought it would have been because you want to keep it separate.
No, I mean, I, I, I think that's what it would, would be, that we would not want. And you don't, you never know who's going to be on city council, you never know who would end up in that role. At least now that I'm actually thinking about it, it's an interesting question, because I'm thinking about the bylaws and the way they're written. I'm not sure, I mean, city council would be the one to appoint that person in that ex officio.
Right.
So, so there, I suppose would have to be three votes to get that person, hopefully it's somebody who's interested in the work. But I think part of the reason of keeping that ex officio is, as you said, you never know who that person could be, and that, that is a good way. I mean, I think one of the things that we have learned through this process is that as a city board, they are going to have to be engaged with the city. And the city's going to have to be aware of what's going on and the struggles that they're having and the ways in which they're succeeding. And so having somebody from city council be a part of those meetings and be engaged in the process and sort of providing that input from the city. But without a voting decision on, say, what happens, what kind of discipline, or not discipline, what kind of outcome is, is recommended at the end of a hearing. It allows that, that engagement, but without that sort of undue influence from the city.
So I, I wouldn't say I disagree with you, I would just say, and I only can speak from my experience on the housing authority. And I would hope that future counselors will feel the same. In my personal opinion, I think individuals take a much more vested interest in the success of the organization or the committee or commission that they're on, when they know that they have voting power.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I wouldn't go as hard for the housing authority as I do now. But I do think, I do have, personally, I have a much more vested interest because I'm a voting member of the body. And I, I, I think there is some benefit.
Yeah.
To having the individual who's up here, because the counselors have access to the budgets, the counselors have access to the resources.
Right.
There's only five of us, this is a, that's, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's interesting, I think it's something we should talk about, because it, we, we proposed it as ex officio. And I don't think anybody else countered by saying that should be a voting member, and so maybe now that that's been brought up, we should talk about it.
That's why we have this discussion, this, I'm not saying like y'all are wrong.
And I think it's part of, you know, having that, you know, the conversation just around like, how do we actually move forward? And how does, you know, um, you know, how do we actually make, you know, this work, you know, that it work and that there's trust involved? And this has been one, because I'll say again, I asked Mr. Blair, and I was willing, because I'm very interested in, you know, attending and being a part of every meeting to figure out how to make this work. And that wasn't something that the CRB wanted, and so it didn't happen. And Counselor Hill and I had the discussion that if I couldn't go or she couldn't, you know, like, we would trade off if there, you know, so there has been an interest. And I wanted to make sure that, you know, Mr. Blair had it on his calendar, so that when there were legal questions that came up, that you all had access to that, you know, very on, you know, very early on. So, um.
Yeah.
You know, I just.
I mean, I, I just think it's a different perspective.
And I don't know if it matters, I mean, if, you know, especially in this stage, whether it's a voting, I mean, this is always something that could be amended, right? So it doesn't necessarily have to, um, because I think it'll, you know, actually, you know, if future CRB boards wanted to amend that, then I don't know if that's something that we have to get hung up on. I hope anyone that would want to spend their time, you know, doing this, whether they were voting or not, would want to fully participate.
Mayor Walker, if I may, the, the rationale for the other argument for not having the counselor vote is because, say, in the case of the Place Design Task Force, that's a policy advisor to the council. And the feeling was that no one counselor should have more influence on the crafting of that policy than any other. So it was more of a protection of the right of this body to behave as a corporate decision-making body than it was to have that representative engaged.
But even if you say that.
So I'm just saying that that's another perspective about why you wouldn't have it.
No, I get it, but even if that's, you're saying that's the case, just by like, if you were the member on the Place Design Task Force, you still have more.
Sure, you still have input, but you don't vote.
Yeah, but you still craft a policy, you just don't vote on it, I mean, it's.
I think, I think there is a distinction.
Well, I don't. Okay, so what do we have?
Mike, you have some questions, because you have to go.
My, my only question, my only point on that is it sounded like from Mr. Blair that all membership would be in the ordinance. So then that actually wouldn't be changeable by the CRB by an amendment to its bylaws. That would have to be amended by city council through that process. And, and there is most, a lot of membership, I mean, and we, we haven't quite had this conversation yet, but most of the bylaws that I review have the membership criteria within them in other cities. And some also have it in the ordinance, some have it in one place and not another. And so that's a conversation that we'll need to have. But part of why we wanted some of that language that now appears to go into an ordinance in the bylaws was to give the CRB power to make those amendments as needed. Because I think this, we are not, we do not know how this is going to go, and we want to set it up so that whoever's actually doing this work can do it the most effectively, depending on the needs of the community.
You have to have it in the.
I think it's important that before we adopt and take the final measure or whatnot, that specific caveat needs to be squared away.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree.
So I would be, I agree with Dr. Bellamy, I think, I tend to think that the counselors should be voting for the reasons that you're talking about. We're on usually four or five other boards, and this one, I think, is going to be intensive. And if you want to make, get the counselor to make it a priority, it's going to be, so I think it's, and, and to the extent that you're worried about something with them, if they're one of however many members, I think the odds of them controlling or directing any block is, is very low risk. I think that based on the experience before and based on many of the other boards that we've done, that this is way too prescriptive. That having to have one voting member with all these different character, and it could actually work against your interests. Because what if this stalls because you just can't, you know, it's so prescriptive and you have to have specific people meet these five different categories, and it just doesn't work out. And then it takes one month or two months or three months, and then somebody drops off, and then it's just, I, like, I think that this could, last time we had about as many people apply as there were numbers. And so what if you have some, what if it's a couple more than that, but you end up really narrowing yourself down and you can't, we can't populate these. So I would think this could be refined based on what the other feedback would be to encourage us to look at these, at these characteristics for our appointments. And we would try and have, and maybe a couple of them, like, maybe you say you'd, you'd want at least a third to be members of, like, maybe the historically disadvantaged communities is one where you do actually have a number. But other than that, I think that it's too prescriptive, that's what I wanted to say.
And I was just curious of how the size of this compares to others, is 11 with two that are non-voting, is that a sim, that comparable size?
Yes, I, anywhere between like seven and 11 seems to.
Just felt a little big to me.
I mean, nine, nine volunteers is not abnormal.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, what's, what do we have next?
Well, right now, we're talking about the composition and then the selection process. I think they wanted to have guidance on how we're going to come about determining this board, I feel like, I'm trying to remember. It is council up.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Just briefly on the selection criteria, we were sensitive to the fact that we might not be able to staff a board that meets all this, these criteria. And for that reason, we set a quorum, there's some flexibility about what that quorum number is, but a quorum that's lower. And the specification that the board could meet even if it didn't have its full complement of people, I think I made the joke that if it, Supreme Court just, Supreme Court could get away with eight people for over a year, you know, we can get away with, and also.
But the, the optics of that are not very good, and think about how that would seem from the communities, from a critical community's perspective, if the board doesn't even, isn't even what it's designed to be. If it's missing four of the members that you, that you all wanted us to appoint to it.
Which is why at the same time, we think that there needs to be more teeth than simply saying, you know, we encourage the selection of a board that is representative in the following ways. We want to give it a little teeth that says, you know, if there is a selection process that doesn't garner applicants such that these boxes, these, this diversity, this representation is met. Not that there'd be going back to the drawing board, but, you know, there are lots of channels by which candidates can be cultivated, be it FAR, be it the city council putting out a new announcement, be it other advocate, LAJC. And, and so I, I do think that there's space to say, yes, we're being prescriptive, but yes, we can also meet our prescriptive goals. And it should be pointed out, it's not that each of these things is an individual box such that, you know, you need 11 people to check 11 different boxes. It could be that one person is representative of multiple, in fact, we anticipate that a, a person might be a resident of public housing and from a disadvantaged community. And they work on behalf, as an advocate on behalf of a heavily policed group of people. So in that sense, I, I think if you look at it, it, it looked, at first glance, it looks incredibly prescriptive and hard to meet. When you realize that a single board member could satisfy multiple criteria at the same time, it's no longer such a big left.
But that seems even more against your interests, because then that, by that logic, then you could have three people who would.
You'd still have the same number.
Who would meet all these.
So I guess maybe if there's just a clause or something put in that if, you know, this is the strong preference, but, you know, can consider other.
It's sort of there, right?
I think it's there, so, you know, maybe. It says shall endeavor. It says, the city council shall endeavor to point members that follow, that satisfy this criteria. It's making me wonder if the, if the, the people who we think are the sort of non-negotiables should be written that way, and then the rest are, should be the shall endeavor.
Skill sets that you're looking for.
Yeah, I think, I'm, I'm happy to work on that.
But you still want 11 civilian board members.
Yes, it'd be, it would be, yeah, nine voting and one ex officio city counselor, or not, depending on our conversation, and another non-voting member.
Okay.
Yeah.
So.
And there, there's council appointments, so the process is consistent with other boards, except there's a, a request for at least one public, public opportunity for the current board and community members to question candidates. But then it still resides to the council to make the appointments. I just know that some community members have expressed different visions of that, and so I just wanted to.
See, I'm, I'm wary.
Of what?
Because, I mean, so essentially, as that's being described, is it going to be a public interview for the CRB?
It says, new board members shall include at least one, sorry. Except in the event of short-term, basically, the appointment process for new board members shall include at least one public opportunity for current board and community members to question candidates.
Right.
So what is?
With all due respect, this is what we all went through, we had a quorum for our own, and that's what we did.
So you, I, I agree with you, you all went through that, I don't know if that was the right thing to do.
Yeah.
And that's one thing I think we as a community and a city as a whole need to learn from, you know, we do things, we try things, we're bold, but that doesn't mean we have to do them again, because sometimes we make mistakes. So, and I think, and to a certain extent, a lot of applicants did not continue to go forth with the process because of the open quote-unquote, the publicness of it all, that's not even a word, but, um.
So.
That's, we don't do that for any, we don't have open interviews for any other commission. And I think it's a mistake for us to go that route again, that's just my personal opinion.
We, we do have face interviews for the HR, see, we do have face-to-face interviews.
We do face-to-face, but we don't do.
And for the housing authority board, but not public.
Right.
Okay, just hold, hold that conversation.
Sure. This just, I'm really, because I'm, I'm sorry that I have to go, but just two other things that are unrelated to this, but just to put a pin in them. So I'm a little concerned about the unlimited budget for outside counsel. I'm concerned about, I, I would not agree with putting 1% of the total budget in this. I get that as a kind of opening bid, but it seems very impractical, and, and then.
I think that wouldn't be in the actual proposal anyway, it might be what we proposed to you, but it won't be in the ordinance or its bylaws.
Right, and then no discretionary funds, the discretionary funds seemed weird, where it says that they would have discretionary funds.
I think that is also removed from the.
That would be removed, because that would just be part of the budget appropriation process.
Okay. So back to the discussion about the interview process. So, yeah, not saying that we would do the, or council would do the interviews, but you're talking about the public interviews that before we, or before council would make the decision.
Correct.
And so I would just ask to everybody, which I have been, to just, you know, challenge. Because the, again, if, I think we've all been supportive of a process of a civilian review board, but we have to think in terms of if there's a council that's not necessarily supportive of this process. And, you know, one thing that I, you know, that, you know, talked about to you all during the initial selection was, you know, someone who might be really good on the police foundation board might not necessarily be a good CRB member. And if those individuals apply, and I think we had some of those individuals, then it's, it's just a really different, you know, dynamic. And just to make sure that there's someone who can be, be fair and be critical, but wanting to work in the best interest of communities who haven't received, you know, fair and just practices from police departments historically. So that's a very different, you know, thought process. So I think, you know, I don't know what the answer is for that, but I don't think necessarily having, you know, for this type of body, one, um, like an, or if we, we may not make the decision that day, but even if council did an open, similar to what we did with the city manager position, if we just did the interviews publicly. I hear what you're saying, and I don't really know what the answer for that is, if somebody doesn't apply, because they don't want to go through the, um. public process. My question, part of my question would be, would that be someone that would be a good, you know, effective board member? So.
I'm also wondering if there's anything in between, because we also do in common with our higher, or, you know, our internal, our inter, our inter, internal interview processes. We have, you know, some panels, it isn't quite fully public, but there are other people weighing in and we're considering their input and they may come from different backgrounds. But that's still another council decision, so it does rely back to the council unless we determine and we establish that this is the type of composition we'd want of another group to look at this with. And I don't want to make this, I mean, I realize that could complicate things, but I, I do see the point where it could be a turnoff for some people applying to go through what we watched some of these.
So I think at least if nothing more than the current CRB members, once there is a current board, would participate maybe in that public interview, the panels.
Yes.
I, I could, I could agree with that.
And then the decision may not be made that instant, but everyone will be.
So the main issue then is what are we doing?
And get feedback.
Maybe, and maybe in this case, the initial CRB members might participate.
So, so I think it's fine because it seems like there's general consensus there, here rather, excuse me. However, I just would say for the current CRB, anyone watching and whatnot, we're in a current political climate. I think Mayor Walker alluded to this to a certain extent, but I want to address it from a, a different perspective. This current political climate in which we hear from many of the active participants of the CRB now are very much so pro-social justice. Pro, let's make sure that we are very transparent. We may have different philosophies, but I think our, our chief is the same way. Like, we want to make sure, I think collectively, everyone wants to make sure that we go about this the right way in a transparent model and do what's best for the community. But what happens when this climate changes and it is a much more adversarial to the social justice perspective? I didn't say that, you didn't say, I said I'm gonna say it from a different perspective. Can I finish also, Mayor? Thank you.
You can, Dr. Bellamy.
Now I'm in trouble after this, I'm gonna get a call. But, but I think that there, there is a contingent of people out there who do not like the way in which this is going and those voices will be louder. There are some of them even in this room. And I think that we, and I'm coming off, but y'all need to be cognizant of such. I'll just leave it at that. But there's, seems like there's.
So, so I'm, but maybe there's a way that we could ask the CRB, the current CRB to rep, to provide us with five, six of their members to sit on a review panel, that it's not the full CRB, but they, they, they select from in their own body who they would like to have. It's just a suggestion.
We can talk about, like, what the numbers, or you all can talk and give what you all think, but I mean, I think that may be that may work outside of like this extensive, like, full public process.
I think we need to talk about that, the point of involving the public in the interview process as a group. But I just want to point out, it's also in there that somebody from the CRB would be on those panels for hiring staff as well in our proposal. So that the CRB would be involved in both the, the interviewing of or involved in the decision of giving advice to council for who to appoint to the CRB, but would also be involved in a hiring panel for any staff members that were to come on into that department or office or whatever it would be.
But ultimately, that still would rest in wherever the position.
That's right.
We don't even have.
Correct, the city manager makes that hot.
Aster.
But just to have a perspective, I think.
But there are, there are hiring panels within the internal procedure of hiring staff.
Yes, I hear that part, but I'm just saying, I mean, there are some, yeah.
We're just trying to amend expectations. For the position, it's weighing in with your perspective.
Yes, yeah. Because that certainly was a challenge the first time.
With, yeah.
When it became a voting.
Yeah, yeah. And I'm afraid I'm gonna have to leave in about five minutes.
It's a birthday cake.
Tonight?
It's not, no, it's Mike and you and I.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, is there anything else that we?
So, the, we, we should probably just talk about the timeline of their work and so here we are. We've, obviously, there's, we, I mean, we could always, we could always continue to go through this term, but at some point we have to kind of, like, okay, here's what we're gonna kind of present forward. I got the impression you guys said that after getting meaningful feedback, you need about four weeks. So, from Mr. Blair's perspective, it sounded like even though five of your terms end the beginning of June, as long as there's still one term that's active, the whole body continues to be active till early July. But we also can, can discuss, is there, you know, an extension that we need to ensure that they can get this work done?
Well, just from the legal perspective, yes. The attorney general's ruled repeatedly that so long as a body is in existence and a vacant, and vacancies occur during the existence of the body, until the city council appoints a replacement for the board or commission per member, that person retains the office until the city council appoints a replacement or the body expires.
So the current members.
Correct.
Okay.
But as of July one, when all of the board, board members.
Yes, the board would expire on July the second, two thousand nineteen.
So that is when Ms. Parker's term expires.
Correct.
So the question is, how do you feel about that, I guess?
So based on what you just said, then it doesn't matter whether we, they'll all be, they'll all expire July one.
Second, yeah.
July second, unless, right, unless the council votes to.
Someone up.
No, or we extend.
To extend the, the body's existence.
Well, that's more than four weeks.
And that's why I'm trying to get feedback from them if that's.
So we can just say that the current board, all members can remain in place till July.
July the second.
Okay.
My, my thinking on that is so much of the drafting of ordinance language and bylaws. So if the bylaws are the, the document that manages the CRB and the ordinance is the document that sets up the CRB and the staffed positions, then a lot of our work is going to be based on whether those staffed positions and that sort, this larger system is going to be in place. Because if that is not the case, then some of the powers that we are assuming would be in staffed positions' hands, we might want to infer to the CRB in bylaws if they're, so, so for us, the actual drafting of it is complicated. I mean, we could just propose something that is never gonna get passed, but I don't think that's what anybody actually wants. I think we want to know if there is like, a likelihood, if, if what we're talking about is something that you all are likely to, to approve, then we're gonna put a lot of effort into, to crafting the ordinance and the, the bylaws and the proposal in a way that is likely to get us there. What we don't want to do is leave this meeting, have until July fourth without, or sorry, July second without sort of the update from you all, once we get some information to you that I've written down as well, the update from you all about whether or not this seems feasible. Because from my mind, the sort of the four weeks from the feedback is not four weeks from today, but it's four weeks from when we actually get some, some sort of commitment that we're working on the same page, more or less. I mean, I don't think we have to have all the details ironed out, but that this is a model that you all see as being something feasible, because then that takes, there's a lot of. I, I've already taken the time this past week to take, or put stuff in ordinance language, put stuff in bylaws language and into sort of proposals and policy language. And that would be very different depending on the, the overarching model.
Would you be comfortable working with John Blair to get all that language straight? And I, I would be comfortable with.
Yeah, we already have, have done a lot of that work, but it's just a question of, you know, if there is no auditor, say, or no executive director, then what that person does, those powers then have to get inferred to some other group. So maybe that's just a group of, of volunteers that now the CRB is doing that, and then in which case all of that is, it's just, it's just written differently. So that, we want to get something to you that is as close to sort of finished as possible and so it's hard to do that without knowledge of, of the direction that you all see this going.
Mayor Walker, since I have to leave, I, if I may, I, I support them having an executive director. And I do see the importance of an independent auditor because they actually have a policy review function. It's, it's not only investigation into a complaint. So, in that sense, for, for them to be able to begin to write this ordinance that would have these positions in it, that's what I would like to see, to give them direction. So, I don't know if, I mean, because that seemed to be that that's the question, whether we would support those positions within the ordinance. And if we do, then they don't have to try to figure out how to assume those responsibilities within their bylaws as volunteers. That's my understanding. So I'm just weighing in on supporting the ordinance having, I know, I, I realize there's a budget implication here.
Yeah, that's not, so I'm, and I think from my questions, we're going, we can just go down one. I think the executive director position that, you know, as discussed tonight, I think that would be very important. The auditor, I am interested in the feedback that you all give based on the positions posted and, you know, wouldn't like not to have two individuals doing the same thing, so would like for the feedback and then for the police chief and the city manager to weigh in on what that could look like. Possibly if it's the same, if it's different, who it needs to be under and all that for, for it to come back to us to discuss. In terms of extensions, I'm not at this point in favor of extending past July second, but if the work is not done, then, or you all don't think after whenever you all meet again that it is possible to get the final bylaws presented to us, then I am open to having that discussion at that time. So I think that's the three things that we are discussing now.
And I, I agree, like largely in what you just raised regarding the positions, because I, I don't want to have the redundancy. And so if it's just a matter of reporting structure, I think we need to get some, some way in from our staff on how that could look. Because I do think that there's some, some things that are already being evaluated internally, but I understand the concern about having that separated.
Yeah, and if that is just simple, then it's the same information. If it's not, if that's more, you know, if you all are saying that that goes right to the city manager, I don't see why we would pay two people to one, report to the police chief and one to report to the city manager. I mean, I, it's, if it's the same information, then the city manager would just, in my world, and I, this is without even knowing if that's what you are asking for and with the positions that are posted.
And in terms of the terms, I, I just, I can sense that it's, there's gonna be more kind of back and forth to kind of get to another place because we have a lot of questions that came up today, they're gonna digest them and so I'm fine with us waiting to make a determination. I'm certainly open us, looking at a, of a relatively limited extension. I mean, I would think that we, we want to make sure this isn't going on in perpetuity. Because there's always, I think there's gonna be, continue to be some, some modifications on this, this is gonna be a living documents. And so I want us to kind of be mindful of that, but I, I could see another month being beneficial for everyone, just to get us, given all the work that's gone in to where we need to be.
I guess since final comments, I would just encourage us all to stay encouraged. This is a, a huge step for our city and it's necessary. Like, this is what happens in it, so I'm really proud of where we are. It's taken us a while, but we're getting there, so let's just keep it going. Great job to colleagues on council as well as all the folks who've been working hard on this. Let's keep it going.
I think CRB then council.
Thank you.
So before we wrap up, I'm just, they've been doing most of the work. But in terms of, is there any public comment? So anyone wants to come up to speak?
Walt Tynicki, fifteen twenty-one AM Hurst Street. Thanks for the clarification on the auditor and the ED position. I think it's really clear. Sometimes we leave these sessions that we don't quite know where you stand on these particular issues. And so that, that, that influences the way that we can or cannot advocate with you. So it's clear, we need to have clear, some clarity. So let's back, I just want to back up for a second. On the notion of a parallel investigation with access to data, I heard that you all support that. And the only issue is trigger, the trick, what's the trigger?
Mechanism.
Is that right?
Yeah, there has to be a mechanism that has that clear criteria to do that.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm just asking, I didn't hear from other councillors if they supported the idea that they support a parallel investigation with access to data as long as the trigger is later defined. Is that, that's my, I don't, I don't know how the rest of the councillors felt about that.
I think I'm, I'm waiting for that more definition, understanding what that is. It's not something that I think should, like, councillor Signer was saying that should be done every time. There has to be criteria by which we go that, and that's all.
Yeah, so, I mean, what I'm hearing is that there's a, there's, there's support for a parallel process that sometimes occurs, rarely occurs, but that it only gets triggered with certain triggers, whether it's a two-thirds vote of the, of the CRB or it's a, it's a date, a lateness of date. I just want to make sure that you're all on board on the parallel process.
We're, we're open to, it's hard to just say absolutely yes until you see what's proposed, is what those, what that structure looks like.
Regardless of the trigger though, I just, I'm, I'm looking for whether or not you support the idea of a parallel process of investigation. The trigger is a different thing.
I think we all gave feedback while we were up here. I know what you're getting at, but I'm not answering.
Okay, I just didn't get a sense of, I didn't get a sense of whether or not you were on the same page about that like I did with the auditor position.
I think we want the CRB to function well and that no matter who's in office or who's the police chief, for there to be a body who can make sure citizens are taken care of.
Totally agree with that.
I don't think anybody didn't say that.
Yeah, no, I, I heard that as well. I just wanted to get some definition on that one component, because you provided good definition on the auditor ED position. I just wanted to get some definition on that.
And there are also some legal that you're gonna.
Yeah, the legal implications.
Process of whether.
Yeah, yeah.
Full parallel process is possible.
Because I, I, I think personally, I need to see that legal review. I need to see what that mechanism is to know that I can endorse a parallel process completely. But if, if those clarity, that clarification isn't made evident by July and I'm not agreeing to the parallel process yet, I don't want to be put in that position saying, oh, but you said. I'm, I need to see these, these things established.
Okay, that's clear.
I'm trying to make that very clear.
Thanks. And, and just last thing, on this thing about, you know, having an independent auditor and the reporting structure for the, between the ED and the city manager. My Arab friends always tell me constantly, they say, trust in God but tire camel. And I think what I'm hearing today, I mean, there's, there's no doubt that we want to build trust here. There's also no doubt that we've had decades of mistrust. And so the idea here, I think that we're getting at is, in, in the beginning part, in the initial part of this, is a trust in God but tire camel, which is, let's give the, the CRB some parallel investigatory.